This conference will now be recorded.
Why not?
Yeah, that's. I worry, you know? Hello, Sean. So glad you can make it. Yeah, Casey's calling in. Good evening. Clerk, please start the recording. Today is Wednesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty five, and I'd like to call the night's City Council to me or to order. That we could all please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is when you're standing up here. All right, clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Fox.
She is absent and excused.
Councilmember Casper.
I am present online.
Councilmember Boyle.
Present.
Councilmember Leah.
Present.
Councilmember Servini.
Present.
Mayor Strubin.
And I am present also. Thank you. Clerk, can we please call up any public comments from the audience?
Al Phillips.
Al Phillips, three six zero one six, West Jenny Creek Road. Boy, more people, but we need even more people. You know, like the events all summer long, it's kind of just a. There hasn't been as many, uh, four down, there hasn't been many people, you know, there, you know, we had a good turnout for the parade of people. But I felt pretty wasn't long enough. But we had a good car show, but that was just because the stars aligned and that was the only car show of the weekend. You know, I asked guys, well, how come so many people showed up? He said, well, there was no competition. I said, well, shoot. And so then I thought, well, what can I recommend? I said, well, you know, since we love consultants, I thought, well, shoot, we could hire a consultant to get people to come to the meetings and the, the, everything else. And who could we have to do that?
Al.
See, we can't have people in a row. Who's been successful in getting people to come to the city council meeting? Kimberly, you know, we should hire Kimberly as a consultant, you know, to get people to come to the various events for the city. You know, she was real successful in getting people to come down here, you know, so it just seems logical that, you know, we hire another consultant to get somebody that's been successful. Thank you, God bless America.
Wow, thanks, Al.
I found food works, too.
Chrissy Dubois.
First, we'd like to thank the city for being so welcoming, making the woke club so accessible to us. We understand. We are sharing it with the entire community. It may benefit all of us to have an online calendar system that the whole community can use would be so nice. Um, I think we've been mentioned that to different people. So anyway, we are still looking for a place for the La Center Arts to call home. We were disappointed with the proposed cost of the old City Hall building. At this time, it is beyond our means. We want to remind you that every member of the La Center Arts Council is a volunteer and all the work is on a volunteer basis. We are a nonprofit organization and we are investing our time, resources and skills in the arts in La Center, and we feel you should, too. The L C A C long range vision is to provide a multifunctional public arts facility, complete with a performing arts venue, classrooms for workshops and art gallery emphasizing local talent and an art library. Sorry for my voice. Um, cultural arts strengthen a community by benefiting the youth in the schools, engaging the aged, aged, building a more diverse and creative economic base and attracting visitors. And we continue to support, support all of the community and want to maintain our momentum going forward and the hope that the city is willing to work with us in this mission. Thank you.
Chrissy, I'm shocked at the, at the news. Um, I was hoping that we could have more conversations, but apparently it's made, is it a decision that was made by the council?
Yes, because it's just unless we can talk more.
Well, the conversations were continuing, so I'm still stunned that I'm learning it now in public comment. Okay, all right. Clerk, any other comments from the audience?
No other comment cards from the audience.
All right, for those calling in, please press star six to unmute yourselves, state your name and address for the record.
This is Kimberly Goheen Elben, live citizen of Clark County, Washington. I, I do want to mention that you guys made kind of what I think is a silly little policy and we need to take a vote is that, uh, when people have a public speaking like we are and that woman was is that you don't respond and this and that. So it seems like to me you respond if you want to and maybe not respond when we want you to. I would like to put forward right now that when, uh, the public does want you to respond, such as, uh, on June twenty sixth, when six sixty people did show up there because they were unaware of what was going on. Uh, that's what I'll be speaking on tonight, that, uh, you allow us to do so. There's got to be some time, right? If we're there, we should have that time. In fact, this is our meeting. You're doing the people's business. And so community love and in community is unity. And I'll talk more about that, but thank you for the community love. Uh, Sean Boyle mentioned, uh, back at the C Tran meeting, being a member of the one twenty five club. And if he, tonight he could speak about that, I'd appreciate it. Um, I have a few main concerns for La Center as our small town feel. I heard at a La Center, or excuse me, at a Clark County meeting here, that the government officials laughed saying that all towns in Clark County are cities. I do not agree, and I hope that La Center will remain one of the less populated small towns in Clark County. We must stop overpopulation pollution and sustain what depleting resources we have. You're not going to hear about it, but our government does not want hysteria. So they won't warn us that the earth is in big trouble as humans in a very short time have polluted our home, the earth, of which we must be made of aware of. But this awareness starts at the grassroots level and that begins by following the warning our forefathers wrote for us to assemble. Al's right, we need more people there and we're going to get those people there, right? The assemble, uh, to assemble, we the people to hold our elected officials to do the will of the people. Those of us who pay taxes to put food on your table as they were elected to do the people's business. But the town of La Center has become a corporation as, uh, our most towns and cities, uh, their main goal now becomes to make uh, and generate monies and funds. Those are hard earned tax dollars they use. So they are a corporation and, and is all of this for the people, right? Well, not so right at this point in time. One example, most recently is the now two years in the making of plans to develop Timmins Landing, both sides of Timmins Road properties and become, uh, more, because they'll become more populated pollution. There will be put two roundabouts there, one of which will be placed on La Center Road and Timmins Road, uh, commonly known as the Pacific Highway on a steep grade. Also, the plans for a new downtown were in the makings for two years without the people. You did the people's business, but it wasn't what we wanted. Um, it, uh, plans were being made. Thank you, God bless America.
Any other callers calling in, please press star six to unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record. Clerk, are there any comments to be read?
There are no comments to be read.
Thank you. Uh, that brings us up to the consent agenda. If there are no requests for items to be removed, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. All right, well, Alec, this is your turn. Uh, we do have a presentation night. This is the twenty twenty five comprehensive plan update. This will be presented by W S P's Alec Erogila. Oh, gosh dang it, I did it again, didn't I? Eggerola.
Yes, yeah, you got it there. Eggerola.
Eggerola. You know, uh, two years in the making and I still don't get the name right. I, I apologize. We'll be presenting the comprehensive plan update tonight. Alec, the mic is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members for having me again tonight. Um, as, uh, the mayor indicated, I'll be discussing the twenty twenty five comprehensive plan update process with the city of La Center. As you noted, this has been a two year process, um, reviewing these draft elements of the comprehensive plan. Um, and tonight we're looking at the last grouping of the draft elements of the comprehensive plan, which are specifically the facility elements. So if you go to the next slide of the presentation, um, we're looking at the transportation element, the capital facilities and utilities element, parks, recreation and open space, and then associated code updates. Again, tonight, this is just a general overview of these draft elements. Um, we've had extensive review by our planning commission on these elements with significant input. And, um, we've made revisions according to that, um, so request to hold your comments and questions to the end of this presentation on these elements. Um, and so, um, I'll, I'll go over those, go over next steps, some comp plan update schedule, a discussion, and then make a motion. Um, and so on the next slide, uh, since the last meeting, um, when I came here, I believe in the spring, we reviewed the draft minor elements. So this is the economic development, historic and archaeological preservation, urban growth and annexation and government elements. Um, we moved to hold those elements, those draft elements for adoption, for the ultimate adoption of the comp plan, um, at a date. Uh, I'll discuss later in my presentation. And then, uh, again, as I prefaced earlier, planning commission has reviewed two drafts of these elements I'm discussing tonight and have recommended to move these forward to the council for your review. So next slide, um, first I want to go into the transportation element. Go to the next slide. Uh, this is chapter two, the comprehensive plan. So we updated the transportation element, um, to include, uh, existing conditions section on revenue sources. So that's discussing the state gas tax, transportation impact fees or TIFs and grants, updating the current transportation inventory. Um, and this includes pedestrian bike facilities, transit and streets. Um, it has to be a multimodal approach per G M A. Um, and then updating the level of service of those facilities. So how well these, uh, facilities are performing throughout the city. And then, uh, we updated the future condition section to include a discussion on transportation demand management. So essentially strategies on how to reduce congestion during high traffic hours. So that's looking at ways of, um, incentivizing ride sharing, walking, um, public transportation and teleworking. And then lastly, um, as I said earlier, looking at multimodal level of service per the G M A. So, um, assessing the level of traffic stress of these facilities throughout the city. Um, one thing I want to note is the city is currently updating its transportation C F P or the capital facility plan, um, which identifies and prioritizes transportation projects, how much these will be in funding sources. Um, this is used, that C F P is speeding into this element. Um, and currently the city's in a draft, uh, state of that C F P. Um, but they'll be bringing that C F P through, uh, planning commission and city council for review. So once that's finalized, it will be finalized into the, this element here. Um, next slide is, uh, to preface my, preface the next slide, but, um, this is just generally a graphic to how, to see how level of traffic stress is, um, measured uh, for bikes, which you see at the top and pedestrians at the bottom. A level of traffic stress score of one is, means low stress. So it's more user friendly, uh, less stress for those users. And then you go up to four, where it's the highest stress for those users. So essentially the lower traffic stress levels because there's better facilities, there's more space between a bike or pedestrian from traffic and there's kind of less traffic on those roads. And then you go to levels of stress factor four. There's almost no facilities, your bikes or pedestrians are basically on the road next to transportation. Yeah, yes. Um, so if you go to the next slide, um, this comes from the draft C F P. Um, this is still up to be updated a bit, but we just wanted to give you an idea of what this looks like. Um, so throughout the city, um, areas in blue or green, you kind of see there in yellow, those are low traffic stress areas. And then everywhere in orange and red are high traffic stress areas. So you can see along Aspen Avenue, um, on nineteenth street and Stevens Hillside, uh, John Storm Avenue and tenth street, the, um, level of track of traffic stress is low. However, um, along La Center Road, Timmins Road, uh, Lockwood Creek Road, and then, um, three thirty ninth street and Pacific Highway, you have a higher traffic stress level. And, um, you can see that because there's less, there's next to no facilities, pedestrian or bike facilities there, and there's a lot of traffic on those roads. Next slide, please. So looking into transportation policies, um, revised and added a few policies here. Um, we revised policy to adopt multimodal transportation level of service standards per G M A or the Growth Management Act. Um, revised a policy to complete the east west connection with pedestrian facilities on, um, Boland Street and nineteenth street through the northern sections of the city. We added a policy to continue implementing the city's complete streets program. And then also added a policy per planning commission comment to continue coordinating with Clark Kellet's fire rescue through the planning process to ensure adequate emergency services through roads in the city. Next slide, um, going over a few code updates are associated with transportation per the Growth Management Act. Um, we updated chapter eighteen ten for concurrency requirements for, uh, transportation impact studies to exclude I five as part of the city is within I five. Um, that's per G M A requirement to remove statewide facilities and, um, concurrency requirement findings. And then we updated several definitions in the definition section of the code revolving around electric vehicle infrastructure or E Vs. Um, so battery charging stations, battery exchange stations, E V infrastructure, rapid charging station and tandem parking. The next slide, please. We also updated the code specifically the mixed use and commercial zones to allow E V infrastructure uh, per Growth Management Act requirements. Um, we asked the planning commission, planning commission, if we want to expand this permitted use into other areas of the city. Um, the P, planning commission elected to keep these only in the required zone as these are commercially oriented uses. So it's most feasible to have those electric vehicle stations, um, in those locations. And then we updated several parking requirements specifically to residential only uses, um, to allow tandem parking. So that's when you have two vehicles stacked on each other and they have one point of access in and out. Um, so only, that can be allowed only for residential only uses. Um, and then also to allow gravel and grass pavers, um, updated the parking space minimum sizes and then, um, allowing a maximum amount in non-conforming parking spaces for residential only uses, which is six. Um, however, um, these non-conforming parking spaces still have to be eighty eight compliant. And then next slide, please. Uh, going into our second of the three elements tonight, it's capital facilities and utilities. And the next slide, please. Um, we updated the element itself to describe the G M A requirements for, uh, capital facilities and utilities and how you have to assess these every six years, um, which the city is currently doing. And, uh, taking inventory of current facilities and planning for future ser, future ser, services and facilities for future growth. Um, we also updated, um, the different services and other public services inventory and future demands. So looking at waters, sewer, fire, libraries, school district and so forth, there's several of them. Um, but I wanted to note that, um, essentially all these services have done their long range planning efforts or are currently doing so. Uh, but the school district and the Fort Vancouver Regional Library District are still starting the process of long range planning for the next twenty years or so. So we don't have a bunch of information or much information from them as of now, but they will be, um, providing that uh, information as they update, um, later this year. Um, and then there's a section on essential public facilities. Um, and these are things such as the regional, regional transit authority facilities, mental health facilities, group homes and community facilities that we updated. And then, um, lastly, there's a huge list of planned and to be funded improvement projects in the city. So, uh, the city can get funding for various projects like, uh, downtown two point O. Next slide, please. Um, we updated several goals and policies as well here for the capital facilities and utilities element. Um, three of them, we updated to incorporate the planning and funding of green infrastructure. Um, a typical, uh, example of this is Fort Stormwater facilities like bioswells or rain gardens. Um, some less engineered way of processing stormwater. Um, we also added a policy to that, uh, focuses on, um, equitable access to all residents and property owners in the city to high quality facilities and utilities. And then lastly, um, the city is currently undergoing a comprehensive stormwater management planning effort. Um, and so we added a policy to implement, maintain and update that plan as, as it's drafted and ongoing through the future. Then, um, here's a code related update with the element. Um, so there's a definition of essential public facilities that we've updated per, um, G M A that R C W cited there. And then, um, the code has a section on citing of essential public facilities or E P Fs. Essentially, these can be cited in most zones in the city. But, uh, current code just has to state that impacts of these to surrounding facilities or properties to be mitigated. But we added per G M A, um, there could be design conditions placed amenities or other incentives to make, um, these facilities compatible to surroundings. I like to note that there's none of these facilities currently in La Center and there's none planned in the future, but state requirements just have to require you have this language in your code. And then lastly, um, we're going into our parks, recreation, open space element. Um, so essentially what this element is, is the last year, you may recall, um, adopting the twenty twenty four Parks Recreation Open Space Plan or the PROS Plan. Essentially, we took that PROS Plan and used that to update this element. So nothing here should be new throughout the element as this is an adopted plan by the city council from last year. Um, so we updated the inventory of parks and open space from that plan and needs assessment to summarize the findings from that twenty twenty four plan, uh, which identifies facilities and acquisition areas throughout the city. And, uh, this also identified that twenty seven acres of community parkland and eight acres of neighborhood, neighborhood parkland are needed to meet the twenty forty five growth projections. And then lastly, uh, we added findings from the tree canopy assessment that's required by the R C W listed there or G M A. Um, and that assessment determined that the current tree canopy coverage of La Center is thirty two percent, which is actually quite a bit higher than a lot of other cities. Next slide, please. Um, just briefly going, going over this, this is the current conditions assessment of current parks in La Center. The column on the far right is the scoring of those parks. Uh, one is good and three is poor. And as you see at the bottom right, the average of all these parks is one point seven. So parks in the center, pretty good condition as a set. Um, however, this assessment can help prioritize which parks need to see improvements first, um, based upon this assessment. Next slide. So goals and policies, we've updated and revised per, um, the parks element. We revised policy six point two, point thirteen to continue to enforce family parks provisions for residential developments as implemented, as implemented by code. So you see in a lot of developments around the center, they have those small scale, uh, neighborhood parks that are required by codes. So just having policy to support that code. Um, revised goal six point three to list a variety of trail users. So that would be walkers, cyclists, equestrians, being very inclusive there of trail users. Um, and then we added a couple of policies. We added and revised a policy based on planning commission feedback. The first is to include a policy to encourage trail signage to keep people out of environmentally sensitive areas like wetlands and riparian areas. Um, again, that's kind of already in our code, but they just wanted a policy to reinforce, um, keeping people out of those environmentally sensitive areas. Um, and then, uh, the last piece here, um, kind of workshop this policy a bit that was already existing. I'm just adding some clarifying language to explore the feasibility of a big canoe launch, um, event in corny with the Kowals tribe to have this event. And then, uh, next slide. So this is the overall next steps. Um, so based upon your feedback tonight, we'll revise those elements and code per council comments and we'll hold that for adoption. Um, but these last three bullet items, this is based upon an update we got last week from the county on their Agland study and the comprehensive planning process. So it's been pretty big news for us, um, just to base upon our schedule. Um, so there's two items going on with the counties, the county draft E I S, which takes into account to our land use alternative to expand, um, the junction area and into, uh, ag designated lands. But also there's the other piece of that, which is the Agland study. So the county is going to publish the draft E I S October first for a sixty day comment period. In the middle, and in the middle of that sixty day comment period, they're going to post the findings of their Agland study on November fourth. And so that Agland study will determine if the areas we're expanding for will be viable to be de-designated from Agland. Um, and if that Agland study supports that, then, uh, we can proceed as is and with the current schedule. And then, uh, this is a typo here, but on March thirty first, the county will complete their assessment, the environment impact statement, and it will publish their final E I S. And if things hold, if the Agland study and the final E I S hold a schedule, we're looking at adoption after that. So it's going to be April, May, June timeframe right there for adoption, just because our comp plan is contingent on the county process. And so we're kind of at the mercy of the county right now. And it's per state law that urban growth boundaries are stipulated by the county, not by the city. So we have to have the county's recognition of that to proceed as is. So I just want to give a overview of what that looks like and, um, some, not great news, but also more of a realistic schedule because of the long delay of getting this Agland study going by the county. So I'm, want to provide that info for you. And then next slide, just closing remarks at this point. So I take any questions you may have, what I provided to you, and then I have a motion on the next slide based upon those elements. So open up for discussion.
Thank you, Alec. Appreciate it. Um, any questions, Brock?
Um, can you go over the sixty day comment period again?
Yeah, um, so, uh, anytime you do an E I S, like for the listener sub area plans, we had a thirty day comment period, which is the, the minimum comment period you're supposed to have for a public comment period on a draft E I S. Um, the county communicated to us that they were initially only going to do thirty days, but they extended it to sixty days because they already had a huge public push to extend that sixty day common period, just to allow more agencies and more people to comment on this. Um, and so, uh, during that sixty day comment period, they'll take all these comments from agencies, um, general public, cities and whatnot, and try to address those into the final P A S, which they're hoping to accommodate those comments by the end of March. And so, um, like I know with the I B R project, they got like five thousand comments or something like that, and it took them forever. forever to like go through all those comments. So something like this big of a push, it's going to be a big effort for the county to go through. So that's basically, it's just a state requirement that they have to publish the EIS for comment before they finalize.
So it's agency and public?
Yeah, it's anyone. It's pretty much anyone. Yep.
Yeah. Any other questions for Alec?
Yeah, I have one. This is Councilmember Casper. Can you hear me?
One second, councilmember. Turn the volume up there. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, is that better?
Oh, a lot better.
Okay, great. Uh, so the March 31st anticipated completion date. I understand you said that it had to do with the the public comment period and that makes some sense. Had the county not delayed on making a decision on the ag study or had just simply granted the request, would would we still be in a position where we're waiting so long for this to be done?
Councilmember Casper, yes. When they initially approved the act study to be done in January, they're planning to start the study would have been done by now. And we probably would have been adopting by December of this year when we were supposed to or into January. So yes, what you're saying is true that the delay of the county to get going on that has delayed the schedule and delayed us.
Okay, thank you very much.
Alec, can we go back to or Maria, can you put the the traffic study slide up there real quick? I just, I want to cover some stuff there with the council and the public as well. So, you know, this is driven by the state. So this is mandated law that we plan for this stuff, right? These are planning procedures that we have to do. If you don't do this stuff, you lose funding. They can withhold our sales tax revenue. And I know Kimberly was talking about city has become corporations and all we're worried about is making money. Well, that's not entirely not true, but not all all truth behind that, right? You have to have so much money in order to sustain the lifestyle that you've become accustomed to or are wanting to see in the city. And everything goes up in cost. So do you take risk and fight against the the GMA? Probably not, right? Because the way of life that you have now would be completely gone or obliterated. The state would withhold with or would withhold funding from us and that would kill everything. But I do want you to know it is planning that we're doing. In 2005, the population for the city of La Center was 2,174. 20 years later, we're right around 4,300. Okay, so it's taken this many years for that type of growth. I'm not saying that we're not going to see this acceleration. Right? I'm just, I'm giving you a basis, a foundation to make opinions and think about things, right? So if you go back even further, it was a lot lower. So it's taken many years to get to these numbers. And just so you know, when when you see stuff like this up here, we are working on this actively. This is not something that we want to be surprised by, right? You don't want to wait for tomorrow to come and not do anything. And you know, you should have done something yesterday or the day before. Right? So there are a lot of people with a lot of ideas that bring them to the table and we sit and chat with them. And then we do bring it to the public. We don't hide any of this from you at all. It's it's all out in the open. We have open houses. We take input. Everybody has a say so in the city of the center. They really do. Whether your idea is used or not, that's a different story, right? But if you look at some of those red lined areas up there, we're working on the routes going out to Pacific Highway there. We're putting in safe routes. The city is actually gonna if we don't get the last $700,000 for the path out there, the city is going to cop for it because, you know, a person's life is not worth $700,000. You know, it's worth many, many, much, much more. So we are going to make that. So this, you'll have the bike paths and more trails and for parks and bicycles and people to even walk to school, you know, and I know this is going to be a firestorm, what I'm about to say, but it's in the planning stages. It's just planning. I know people talk about the roundabout, but if you're going out La Center Road, we have talked about a four lane road, but not bringing it into the town, right? And and you're talking about a 10 to 20 year process and 50 to $100 million. City can't do that by itself. It has to have state funding and state help in order to sustain what we're wanting to do or that we may have to do. The there will also be trails and routes going out that way and that direction. This is all if things go that right, that that route. It's not necessarily set in stone. And in six years, all this might change anyways. Another mayor may be sitting up here and another comp plan is going to come in. Liz, how many have you been through?
Geez. Everyone of them.
Yeah. So and and not everything comes to fruition. So I don't want people to see this and go, oh, my gosh, this is what's going on. If you did notice and paid attention to what we've been working on on this comp plan, you'll see that we have not gone after expanding the urban growth boundary on this side of the bridge at all. Not at all. It's all on the other side of the bridge going out to the freeway, right? Because we already know the infrastructure here cannot sustain 1,000 houses to the east or 10,000 houses to the north. It just can't do it, right? You're talking about new bridges and and then you're talking about widening roads. And it's just, it's not going to happen, at least not probably in my lifetime. But I wanted you guys to all be aware that we are working on this type of stuff and that these are just plans that we are forced to do to stay in compliance with the state and still collect the tax revenue that we need in order to sustain the lifestyle that we are all accustomed to. Is that good?
Yeah, that was good.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to say thank you for saying that. I think you're spot on when it, when when you described this and and the process that's going through it, you know, it for whatever reason, we've accused of being in the pocket of developers and you know, that's, it's absolutely not true. And what people don't understand is housing developments create revenue for the city in the very short term, right? When they're being built. After that, it's a resource drain for the cities. If you look at what the city of Vancouver has done and what they're talking about now, you know, there's articles about the city annexing part of the of the county and it's, it's part of the same process that we're working on right now. But they don't act, they don't annex neighborhoods. They don't annex the places where people are living, where there's 911 calls and medical calls and things like that. They're annexing the portions of the county that are business districts, like the last home that they did, they annexed Costco, they annexed the the Home Depot and those facilities that provide a lot of of ongoing revenue, which is what we are trying to do at the junction. However, there's a lot of issues that are standing in the way of that. And one of them right now is the is the county council and the egg study. There's a lot of others, but Mayor, I think you were, you were right on and we'll see what what the world of Facebook decides to say about us, you know, in the next couple of days, but I don't, I don't know. It's it's frustrating, but thank you for saying that.
Thank you, councilmember. I love the world of Facebook. That's what, that was great. Yeah, it is. Like I said, it's it's a plan. So if anybody ever has any questions or want to talk to us, our doors are open, really. I mean, I know I'm hard to get ahold of. I work a lot. But I will make time to meet with you and go over this type of stuff to help you understand. And no, we're not in the pockets of any of the developers. We see nothing, you know, it and it's really hard to go and tell the next landowner what to do with their property, right? You're not allowed to sell it. You can't sell it, but you can't. Right? You develop a bunch of houses, you get nothing, right? And that that's not the American way anyways. So. All right, enough of my soapbox. Counsel, do you have any more questions or comments for Alec? Maria, can you show the motion?
I move to forward the draft facility elements, chapters 2.4 and 6 of the La Center Comprehensive Plan and the draft La Center MC Title 18 and to hold them for a future final adoption.
Second. She has to say the last part?
Yeah, may add specific revision request to that draft document as part of motion. I didn't have to add that part.
Yeah, I just, I just had that language there in case you wanted to amend anything I proposed up there. Yeah.
Well, we covered it all.
It's been, okay, so it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, everyone. Hopefully that explains things a little bit.
Thank you.
Alec, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Next up is the mayor's report. All right. So last Saturday in the park concert is this Saturday, Wild Flowers and Whiskey. That has got to be the most original name for a band, right? Wild Flowers and Whiskey. There's no alcohol allowed in the park, just so you know. They're a rock or a folk rock and country cover band and it's if weather allows. So it really does, doesn't it? Yeah. Please come down. It's a good time and it's the last one for the summer. You know, we're winding down. So come and enjoy some of these events that the community puts on. We do have a council retreat September 6th, 9am to 2pm here at the city hall. Council members, I look forward to seeing you on that bright and early Saturday. I know you're, you can't wait to come spend it with me. And the public is invited, though I will caution that at these events, the public is not allowed to comment, question, speak with the council. This is where we gather and really start going. Figuring out routes that were taken and other information that comes forward. If you have questions or comments or do want to talk to your counselors, please see them after that meeting or before that meeting. And I wanted to thank the all the law enforcement and the emergency services and press, even CTRAN were coming out to National Night Out. I know Al says it was a lower turnout. We had record numbers for our days. We had great numbers for National Night Out and and I'll say that because we actually spread out the people this time. It wasn't all congregated into one area. We had a dunk tank. Commander Sample was under the water several times and and so was and Sam from the Fire District as well. Yeah, they were swimming and drinking a lot of chlorinated water. It looked like everybody had a good time. We ran through a ton of the hot dogs and the drinks and celebrated with these people and showed them the appreciation I think they deserve. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the attorney. Janine, are you with us?
I am. Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Whoops, I just realized the camera went somewhere else. Sorry. I don't know what I'm doing here. There we go. Well, I don't have anything to report. I have just been suffering through this heat and I'm so looking forward to some rainy days coming. But I'm happy to answer any legal questions that you all have.
You cut her mic, please. Rainy days. Bite your tongue, Janine. We've got nine months of it coming.
Yeah.
Any questions for the attorney? All right. Thanks, Janine. Appreciate you being here and all you do for us. Next up is council comments. Councilmember Casper.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Perfect. All right. Well, to continue with my disparaging remarks about Facebook, reading the La Center Families page can be really, really disappointing. There is so many people that just comment negatively about things that that don't matter or issues that are really pretty important, but these people are so impatient, like the the speed limits. I don't understand why people are in such a hurry that they get mad that somebody's going 35 for another 200 yards instead of stomping on the gas and getting up to 50. I know, I know that Sheriff's Office is trying to do quite a bit about people speeding through town and I really appreciate all of the work that Deputy Frazier is doing, but come on, just relax a little bit. You know, and then there was another comment where somebody said, hey, let's get one of these fancy playground parks. And the city's been working for several years to do that, but somebody in the comments decides they needed to say, well, the city doesn't care. The city would have to make it seem like it's their idea because they don't listen to their people, which is completely untrue. I don't know. I'm getting frustrated with that kind of stuff. I know that the work we're doing is important and I would hope people would open their eyes, open their ears and understand that we're trying to make it better. However, there's not endless resources, which kind of leads me to my disappointment with the La Center Arts Council. I think the city's been very supportive of that group, yet where are we supposed to get this big facility that they they want? You know, the old city hall is not good enough, but I don't know. I'm very disappointed in what they've said at the last few council meetings. So I don't think they're a absolutely necessary part of our city. So you know, maybe they should kind of think about whether or not they want to be supported by the city or not before they make such comments. So I will leave it at that and turn it over to the next council member. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyle.
Good evening, everyone. Didn't sound like, can you hear me? Yeah. Well, first of all, I don't know, Kimberly brought up a question, so I'll just address that real quick. The 125 Club is a nonprofit that I'm a part of. It's comprised of linemen and line workers, their families. And, you know, we just get together a few times a year, do a few raffles, try and raise some money and we donate that all directly back to underprivileged families, battered women, the Burn Center in Oregon. You know, Christmas trees, present thing, you know, the present trees or whatever. It's a really, you know, good group of people just trying to, I don't know where she got that information from it from. I did not bring it up at CTRAM for any reason. So anyway, just want to clear the air on that. And that rolls me back into CTRAM. Last night, we had our Board Composition Review Committee Board Meeting last night and is what we're doing there is we're trying to figure out how we can come into compliance with the state to have the correct composition for the CTRAM board. They want representation based on population. Right now, we feel that the current board is equally represented. And they're kind of forcing our hand to go for like a 4-3-2 model where the city of Vancouver would have four people on the board, the county would have three, and then the remaining two seats would be made up the rest of the small cities. We're going to give it one last ditch effort. We have to have this all figured out here in the next. It's all got to be figured out by October 1st, I believe, first or 31st. I can't remember exactly, but we're going to do one last ditch effort to do a 3-3-3 model where city would have three, county would have three, and then the rest of the small cities would be represented by three seats. And they would kind of take turns like we do right now with Ridgefield and Yakult. So yeah, there's more to come on that. We have a tentative board meeting if this does not go through for September 3rd, I believe, right after Labor Day. So I will update you when I hear more about that. Yeah, other than that, I thought National Night Out was pretty good. I really enjoy. My favorite part is the root beer floats from the Lions Club. Anytime they're out, I'm always going back. So I appreciate that.
You know, you could go down there and volunteer and probably get all the root beer floats you want. We could always use more volunteers. I'm recruiting. Sorry, Janine. All right. Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Leah.
Well, there has been several things going on and one I was going to talk about National Night Out and I thought that it turned out great and was here for like the first hour and then I was volunteering at the fair. So for how many people showed out for National Night Out when the fair is going on at the same time, you know, we I thought that we did really well with that. Want to say that this last Monday night, that was, yeah, yesterday, I mean, Tuesday night, I attended the Planning Commission meeting. I attended the Planning Commission meeting, and I'm finding that's really, it's really helpful for me being on the city council to at least know what the planning commission's talking about and some of their plans. And then, oh, and the music at the Stern Wheeler has been awesome. I've gone every Saturday night. If you didn't go this last Saturday night, you missed me out there dancing. I was dancing with Candy, and we were having a great time. So come, it's it's a lot of fun. The weather's been perfect, and the bands, all the bands have been really good. So I encourage you to come to that. And then also, there was a meeting here for the ADA, talking about the ADA improvements or finishing that up. And it was Suzie Terrell and myself and Al that were here. So I, you know, I appreciate the people that came, but it would be nice if a lot more people came. But I know we're all busy, but these meetings are important if you want to know what's going on in the city. So I just encourage you. I know you're here, so it's the people that maybe will be listening, hopefully, that will, you know, listen to what I'm saying about attending these events that we have in our darling little city. I love it. And that's all I got for now.
Thank you. Al has a bedroom in the back over there, so he's always here. Council member Serini.
I was joking with the mayor earlier about the fact that in years gone by, we found that food worked really well in bringing people to the building. But I'm sure the cost of that would probably steeply rise. So but it is wonderful to see people coming to the meetings, even if it's familiar faces as well as new faces. It it gives us so much more of a rounded understanding of what the new, you know, just our community as it grows, what what your vision is and what we need to be thinking about as we plan for the future. And I guess I would like to follow up on council member Casper's comment about the Listener Arts Council. I think they're a vital resource to the community. There's many youth and adults that find it a valuable experience. And if we turn our backs on that, we're really slamming the door on a good portion of our population. So I would really encourage each of the council members to rethink that thought. Not everybody plays baseball or sports. There are a lot of kids out there that we can really help if we provide arts and cultural events out there. And it is vital to the community in terms of the long range development and our awareness and acceptance of others. So I would encourage us all to rally around the council and help them where we can. And that's it.
Thank you. All right. Tracy, you're going to be a busy lady tonight. You know that? We have staff reports and quite a few of them tonight. So first one is our Community Development and Public Works Staff Report. Ms. Tracy Coleman will be presenting. Tracy?
I should have printed printed a larger font.
That's an ongoing issue.
She's Louise. Okay, so we'll just start with the Public Works Department as in itself, Streets and Facilities. As you guys have probably been aware, you've seen fresh bark spread around downtown and then also around our transit C-Trans parking ride and the the park that we have next to there. If you notice, the the grass is germinated, so it looks nice. It's not dirt anymore. It looks pretty good out there. And so we did that with hydro seeding, and so we have a temporary irrigation system out there. So that'll that'll continue on until we can figure out what we're going to actually fully do with that park. And then also, we have, if you've noticed, if you're driving on Pacific Highway, we've installed new signage for the bridge crossing, including two LED flashing warning signs on Pacific between 9th and 14th Avenue. And we're going to be applying a crosswalk stripe at 14th and Pacific, as well as new stop bars at the intersection on 14th Avenue. Also, this last weekend, striping occurred this past weekend throughout the city in various locations. Other striping will occur when we start the safety, the Wash Dot Safety Grant, which is expected to happen later this year if Wash Dot gets our funding approval done. In Parks and Grounds, we continue to mull and flail the parks and right-of-way areas, and we'll continue throughout the summer and into the fall. And crews recently started a multi-phase low-cost restoration of the restrooms at Heritage Park. So if you want to go down, look at those. We have more light in the rest lighting in the restrooms, and they've been painted with some new toilets, so on and so forth, and it only costs us about 1,500 bucks to do that restoration. So we'll be working on the outside with some new gutters and paint as well. So go down and see what we're doing to those restrooms there. A wastewater treatment plant, all plant parameters remain within the compliance of our NPDES permit. Operators continue to run the biosols, do water and drying equipment, extra time to keep up with our demand. We did extend for a period of time. We've we've been trying different situations down at the plant to make sure we can continue the processing and try to get ahead of everything so we're ready for the winter. So we put the staff on seven days a week, and that didn't show us the results that we wanted to. So we turned back around to do the five days a week. We are continuing to investigate some cost-effective strategies to minimize the risk and improve the performance. We've looked at bringing two MBR tanks onboard, looking at some some different screw press options because our existing screw press is not working, well, press is not working the way that we hope it does. The gearbox drive shaft on the dryer discharge discharge auger broke, and it left our dryer inoperable. So we went ahead and temporarily fixed that auger, and the replacement gearbox was ordered. And we also had a bypass valve on the rotary fan press that broke, and so we did a manual operation and then installed one downstream to accommodate the continued operation there at the plant.
You guys you guys heard that, right? There's definitely some old parts going on down.
Yeah, yeah, we're moving and shaking. Find them where you can.
Yeah, and we will be bringing you guys some options here, or they may not have many options.
Yeah.
Here soon.
The Fourth Street Signal Grant Project, the signal is scheduled to be in operation by the end of 2025 or by March of 2026. Just giving update there. And the shared use path off Pacific Highway, we plan on using some TIF dollars this next year to construct that project. So right now, we just made more awareness to people who are going across that bridge, but we will be starting that project next year. The Wash Dot Safety Grant, which includes striping and some additional signage around town, we are waiting for Wash Dot to authorize some funding bidding, so we can move forward on that. The bad thing about when you apply for grants and you get federal state grants, you have to wait for all these authorizations. So you sit there in limbo forever before you can use those funds. In the Building Department, we have right now Stevens Hillside, 10 homes are under construction. Lockwood Meadows has 14, and Urban Meadows has 14. And in Code Enforcement, we have 16 open cases, which is quite high. The oldest case is from 2023, August 2023. We've made progress on this case and closed it out, but we continue to have to go back out, so we have to reopen the case because once one thing gets done, then another thing comes up. So, um, yeah, so we opened it up about three months ago again, so that's why it seems so old. In regards to our total applications submitted for the month of July, we had seven land use applications submitted. And in so far in '25, we've had 40 total. Of those, 60 are residential, 110 are other, and then we have, I said 40 land use, already said that, so that's kind of a dub date on that. Any questions on that report?
Okay. Tracy, I don't have a question about your report. It's excellent once again, but I do have another question. Do we have any code or regulatory language on the increasing use of e-scooters and bikes?
I don't know the answer to that. I'd have to look into that and get back to you. I don't believe so because we're actually looking at, we were looking at go karts and ATV vehicles. You know, we brought that before. So I will look into that and get back to you.
I'm just seeing a lot of.
Are they on the sidewalks? We do have signage. I know e-bikes are hot right now, and you see them all over when you travel to Europe or wherever you're going.
Well, even here, I'm seeing more, an increased use of it, and not very wisely.
Yeah.
I would hate to see a kid get killed.
Yeah.
Not not go karts, Tracy.
Yeah.
We're not doing go karts.
Oh, did I say go karts?
You didn't.
I want a go kart. I don't know, a golf cart's a little more expensive. Go kart, I can pick up for a couple thousand bucks, you know. So anyway, okay, thank you for correcting me on that. All right. And then I just wanted to share also, it kind of is part of this. I didn't put this in there, but we have applied for multiple grants and so additional grants. And so we applied for a $400,000 grant, which is to put a turn lane in on La Center Road. So right now, we have we have double yellow lines. So if you're on the other side of the bridge, where everybody buys the berries and everything else, there's a double yellow line. You're not supposed to cross that line. And so what we're looking at is putting a turn lane in there so we can keep the flow of traffic going down the hill. But we put a turn lane in there to help people go down to the recreational facility down there by the lake, and then they could come out, and then they would do a right turn and leave, get out of there. So people are not following the traffic, so we put in for a grant for that because, again, it's $400,000, and we don't have $400,000 in our transportation budget. So we applied for a grant there. We also applied for a grant for additional crack sealing and HMA hot mix repairs throughout the town, and that was for $90,000. Of that, only $9,000 is a match for us, so we can really make our dollars go wise with these TIB grants. It's only a 10% match. So we applied for that, and then we also applied for one for, again, the grind and overlay on Aspen and 10th. So that is a million-dollar project. And so our match there would be about $108,000. So those are three that we applied for. Additionally, on September 8, I'm applying for one that is the Rural and Tribal Assistance Pilot Program. That's the RTA grant, and it's going to be submitted for design, engineering, and permitting for the downtown 2.0, and also a bike and pedestrian lane that would go up La Center Road. So right now, as you know, we've had a death and different accidents on La Center Road. We don't have a really good bike and pedestrian path, so we're looking at doing the engineering design for that. And so that's what we're applying for that grant.
And lighting.
Yeah.
And lighting.
Yeah, and lighting. Thank you. It would be a 10-foot bike and pedestrian lane, which would be off the road and separate from the roadway itself with lighting. But something I want to share with that is that that it would also require a lot of retaining walls in there, so it's going to be a pretty expensive project. But this this grant is crazy. This, I've never applied for a grant that I'm going to do this time, and it's it's first come, first served. It opens up at a certain time. I think it opens up, the grant application portal opens up at 11 o'clock. And within the first eight minutes, all the applications are submitted. There's a couple million dollars available, and you have to be Johnny on the spot, click, 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 Ctrl C, Ctrl V, cut and paste and throw it in, and whoever gets it in first gets the money. So it's going to be really intense, so I will not be available on that day in the morning. I will be stressed out to the hill. And I'm just gonna, I am. I literally did practice today. I am going to practice because I am, my goal is to, if I get that grant, I want cupcakes. I'm just saying. So anyway, so so there's that. So I'll be applying for that. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Tracy. Any questions or comments for Tracy?
One thing I want to say is that with the 515 Birch property, like, what a change from what it was. It looks so nice. I can't wait till it's completed and we, you know, find a use for it or whatnot, but it does really look cool. And it's, I think it's in a good area too with, you know, Podunk being close, the churches, you know, nearby and stuff. I think I could see it getting a lot of use in the future.
Yeah, same here. Thank you.
And I agree with that too very much. And the other thing I want to thank you, Tracy, because you are just so good about being on top of getting these grants. And I don't know where we'd be if you weren't just getting grants all over the place. So thank you.
Tony's on it.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah.
It's a team effort.
Yeah.
It really is. They've got a great team up there. You know, I do, I will have to say one thing, Tracy. I was sitting here listening to you. I think that's something that needs to be in your reports on on the grants and stuff that you're submitting. And I think the public needs to hear more of the good things that you and the team are doing over there. Before we continue on, Maria, is there a chance that we can get the AC turned on in here? It's getting a little warm, and I'm seeing people, but yeah, I'm looking back there. I'm starting to doze off up here, so I figured you guys are right there.
Oh, wake you.
Yeah, right?
It's all this hot air.
Yeah. Interesting.
I'm going to talk fast.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and move forward at that point. All right. Any other questions or comments for the Community Development and Public Works Report for Tracy? All right. Thanks again, Tracy. Next up, we have the Express Bill Pay Staff Report. This will be also presented by Ms. Tracy Coleman. Tracy?
All right. So basically, this is in regards to our digital paper-to-digital grant permitting software system that we received a $200,000 grant on that, about $194,000. So that was in December of 2024. We signed an agreement with Washington State Department of Commerce. And so as part of this process, where we need to have a permitting system, this permitting system requires us to have the ability to accept credit card payments, and our current credit card payment system is not applicable for this cloud permit that we're using, our iCloud. Is it cloud permit or iCloud?
Cloud permit.
Thank you. It's iCloud. Oh, that's a little thing in the air. Anyway, so for cloud permit. So with that being said, just seeing if you guys are paying attention. We have evaluated a couple different software companies and for credit card payments, and we found one. And I had the attorney, city attorney, review the contract for the one that we selected. That's Express Bill Pay. And so I'm recommending that we use Express Bill Pay to accept our credit card payments for permitting applications. And then hopefully, we can get rid of the three current credit card systems that we have, but slowly integrate it in so we're not bombarding our staff with, oh, now you have a new credit card system for all the utility billing for anybody who comes in for building permits. So we're going to slowly integrate that for the system, so to make it easier. So that's what I'm asking to approve the contract for.
Does that make sense? Yeah. All right. Any questions for Tracy? If no questions or comments or conversation, can I get a motion?
I move to allow the mayor to sign a contract with Express Bill Pay, allowing credit card payments to be accepted by the city.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? I didn't hear Councilmember Casper. Did you guys hear?
No.
Councilmember?
You were too quick. By the time I unclicked it, you said opposed, so I am I am voting in favor of this motion.
I do apologize. I will try to be better at that. Thank you, Councilmember Casper. All right. Janine, do you want us to do that over again, or is that sufficient?
She's gone.
She's gone.
I'm I'm here. Sorry. It just took me a minute to work my mouse. No.
I held off. I didn't say anything. I waited.
Yep, thank you. No, that would be sufficient because you did confirm, and he confirmed the vote, so that that can count as a yea vote.
Okay. Thank you very much, Janine. Thank you, council. Motion is approved. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have the Windsor Engineers Contract Amendment Stormwater Staff Report. Ms. Tracy Coleman will also be presenting this.
Okay, so in June of 2024, we signed a professional service agreement with Windsor Engineers and to look at some design options for our stormwater system, which is underneath the Phoenix Casino Parking Lot for rehabilitation. The contract was approved at $117,440. We're requesting the approval of a change order totaling $4,000. And the reason for this change order is so we can we can ask for assistance from them in filling out two different applications, one from the Public Works Traditional Funding Board and one from Water Quality Combined Funding Program. These are the only programs that we've found thus far. There are no grants that would allow us to replace this storm pipe for the project. It only qualifies right now for loans, not grants. The loans are a very, very low interest rate. Doesn't mean that we're going to get them. Doesn't mean that we have to take them. Just means that we need to get the applications because the application dates are due this month. With that being said, the Public Works Board Fund offers loan terms from five to 20 years at an interest rate of 2%, 2.12%. And the Water Quality Combined Funding Program offers five to 20-year loans at 1% to 2%, 2.5%. So they're very, very low interest rate loans. Doesn't mean we need to have to borrow all of it. Doesn't mean we have to borrow any of it. But we do need to get the applications in if we want options, and so I'm asking for approval of a change order with Windsor Engineering to be able to allow us to get those applications in so we have some type of solution should we need to move fast on this on this project. So this total new contract price would go from $117,440 to $121,400 upon approval, so it's only a $4,000. I also have funds in there on a line item in our budget. I also have funds in there on a line item in our budget to cover the $4,000. So we're not going to be asking for any additional funding now, the general fund. We're just asking for the $4,000 that'll be taken out of another line item that we have funding available in.
Yeah, and Tracy, just so you can refresh the memory of the council and even the residents listening, can you go over what that is entailing, what we're actually, not just the loan, but what we have to do?
So there is a failed stormwater pipe at the Phoenix Casino parking lot. It has partially collapsed, and so we did an evaluation on that. We looked at either lining the pipe, we can't line the pipe, we have to abandon the pipe, fill the pipe where it's partially collapsed, and then also just put a new pipe in. So that's what it entails, is putting a whole new system in, and that's literally at a cost of a million dollars.
And we've been exploring different options since even when Brian was here over a year ago. Just so you guys are aware, and this is that pipe that's sitting right there at the edge of the card room. So if it completely collapsed, we could have a bigger catastrophe.
So we had a sinkhole on the road back behind there, and so that's what, that's when we found it.
Yeah. I remember that. I thought, we did not go forward with lining that pipe back.
No, they said that it couldn't be lined because it was partially collapsed, so we couldn't go in and line it.
You know what, what size storm?
I want to, I, I don't know off the top of my head. I want to say it's six inch, I, I could be wrong though, might be eight. But I know it does go to the outfall of the creek on the other side of the road that was tied into.
It's an unfortunate thing that the city has to deal with, right? You don't plan on spending a million dollars on a storm drain, but when it's starting, actually, you have to do, or find creative ways to pay for it. And so Tracy and Brian, as well before, have been working on creative ways for over a year now, and it's coming down to the wire that we need to get moving on it, so.
Well, part of it is a stormwater fund that we have, so now we actually have a stormwater fund. So as we bring revenue into that fund, if we do need to obtain this until, you know, we can find a grant, so on and so forth, then, then we can do that. Now, mind you, once we do the work, we can't go for a grant all of a sudden we've done the work on. But if we get this and all of a sudden the grant opportunity opens up, and we apply for that before we've done any of the work, we can, we can move forward with that. But right now, there isn't anything, so I just want to make sure that we're prepared if we need to be.
Yeah, like I said, it's an unfortunate event. I mean, that's why we're putting money away for the rainy day fund, right? Just like we did last year, and hopefully by the end of this year, we'll be on the same track of what we were last year. So that helps us out.
Mayor, I am moving to authorize a change order to the Windsor Engineers Stormwater Contract in the amount not to exceed $121,400.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember. Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes, thank you, Council. If anybody has any questions about that, please see Tracy after the meeting or make a phone call or an email. All right. Next up, Tracy, surprise. Windsor Engineers Contract Amendment for the ADA Transition Plan Staff Report. Ms. Tracy Coleman will be presenting. Tracy?
Okay, so before I go into that, I'd like to talk about, when we were talking about applying for these different types of grants, one of the requirements, kind of like I said, we have to have an ADA Transition Plan. One of the requirements now that they're coming up with is we have to have a greenhouse gas reduction policy. We are not required by the state per chapter RCW 70.235 to have a greenhouse policy because we're too small, okay? But they will not allow you to apply for grants, loans, so on and so forth unless you have one. So at the next council meeting, I'll be bringing forward, I did, I had a memo when I first came in here a year ago that got us by this far, but now they're saying, no, you have to have a policy. So I'll be bringing, bringing forward a resolution 25490 at that time that will, that we need to get passed so we can tell them we have this greenhouse policy that will allow us to apply for these grants. It's very simplistic, it's very simple, something as simple as we will have all LED light fixtures within the city, or we'll make sure that we use recycling within the city, or we'll put bike and pedestrian paths to reduce gas emissions in the city. It's something just very simplistic that we'll use for our cities so we can actually apply for different grants and different types of funding. So I'll be bringing that at the next council meeting.
That's all, that's all truth, though. All that is truth. Everything you just said was true. I mean, we're at a bypass here on Fourth Street, it's going all the way out, yeah, that's.
Yeah, so that goes kind of with the last contract with the $4,000 change order to say that one of those, one of those grants, or excuse me, one of those loans, you can't even apply for the loan unless you have a greenhouse gas reduction policy adopted. So anyway, so that's what's going to come, and I have to have it adopted by, by the end of the month if you want to go for that type of funding. So I'll be bringing that forward. Now, on to what I was supposed to be talking about. So the city, so this is in regards to ADA, ADA Transition Plan. The city approved a budget for this plan in the 2025 budget, and the budget was not to exceed $25,000. The contract went in place in February of 2025. I'm requesting a change order for, two change orders totaling $7,500 for two things. One is for them to come out and they had to do some sidewalk and field inspections, and our, our crew did not have the time and availability to do that. So it's a $2,000 charge for them to come out and do that. It was 30 and a half hours of their time. And then they also had to import all the documentation, finding and notes, so on and so forth, pictures into this plan. So that's part of it, that's $2,000 charge. The other one is for the Town Hall and Support for, that we had here that nobody showed up to. So that's a $5,500 charge. And the reason why I had this Town Hall was because of all the complaints that I received that we don't get information out to the community, even though we had different information on our website. We had a survey, we had an open house, we had a table and event, so on and so forth. So I did another event, and nobody came except for three people that already knew what was going on. So with that being said, that's an additional $5,500. So with, with that said, I'm asking for an increase to their budget of $7,500, which will take their contract from $25,000 to $32,500. The additional funds will be taken from our Roads and Street Fund that we were, I had set aside for the Aspen TIB funding, that we did not receive this last year because we got the half a million dollars for the Fourth Street and half a million dollars for the bike and pedestrian path instead. So I have funds available out of that line item to be able to pay for the $7,500 way above and beyond to pay for that. So I won't be asking for any additional general funds.
Makes sense? Yeah. Council, any questions, comments, conversation?
Well, I think Tracy does an excellent job of explaining, and then on top of that, we read all the materials before we get here. So that's why oftentimes we don't have questions, because we've already read through it all. And I just thank you for all the details that you give us, Tracy, because it's, it's nice to be able to not only read it ahead of time, but to hear you explain it. So with that being said, Mayor, I am moving to authorize additional spending on the ADA Transition Plan Contract Change Order as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes, thank you, Council. Appreciate it. All right, thank you, Tracy. Good job, that's a lot of talking, so you'll probably have a hoarse voice tomorrow. It's all good.
Damn.
I don't think you got the hint there. You'll probably have a hoarse voice tomorrow.
Oh, does that mean I get the day off?
No.
Oh, sorry.
All right. All right, Council, that brings us to any unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? About new business. If there's no new business or unfinished business, can I get a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes, thank you, Council. Thank you, everybody, for attending, I appreciate it.